Vivian just went up to the office, but she'll be back. I don't know if you're late.
Well, I just do.
Okay. I get to say there and stuff.
Okay, we can call the meeting to order. Town and North Smithfield zoning board of review, meeting for Tuesday, December 10, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mr. Najarian?
Here.
Mr. Maston?
Here.
Mr. Marc Antonio?
Yeah.
Miss, Mrs. Benoit?
Here.
Mr. Gill?
We had indicated that Chris DeZiel had emailed us to note his absence for tonight. Item three, disclosure of no compensation or pension credits received by board members. We were all appointed by the town council. Item four, disclosure and notice, zoning board of review members shall disclose any ex parte communications about any contested or material adjudicatory facts or opinions concerning the merits of any application before the zoning board of review. Item five would be the minutes from, far back, that was our last meeting, April 11th of 2024. My, how things have changed. And that was the joint meeting with the planning board, which was a fairly generic event, but nonetheless, we have to approve the minutes. So you had them in advance. Would take a motion to accept or approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item six would be election of officers. We know we have three, chair, vice chair, and secretary. So we usually go in ascending order or descending order. So I assume we'll start with nominations for chair.
I nominate Robert.
I accept. Is there a second? We have a second. We usually do, historically, we just do a voice vote. Everybody in favor of that? A roll call vote? Okay, or we'll just say, yeah, we'll do that. So Vivian, if you could just read back the nomination for chair, then get a vote, please.
Who seconded?
Vinnie, Mr. Marc Antonio.
Okay. Okay, there was a motion for Robert Najarian for chair. It was from Mac, Michael Marston and Vinnie Marc Antonio seconded.
We can just have a roll call vote, or I guess you can do all in favor, council, does it matter? Roll call vote would be better.
Okay. Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Maston?
Yes.
Mr. Marc Antonio? Mrs. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Well, I don't know, alternate can't, oh, he's sitting, so he does vote.
Yes.
That's correct. I'm sorry. All right, thank you very much, all. It's my last year, so I'll give it my all. Vice chair, the alternate can't serve, but I'll open up nominations.
I was going to nominate Vinnie.
His time has been logged.
I second.
Do you accept, Mike?
Yes, I accept.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we can close. All right, so again, we'll have a voice vote.
Okay, so Vinnie Marc Antonio nominated Michael Marston to be the vice chair. Mrs. Benoit seconded the motion. Roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Maston?
Yes.
Mr. Marc Antonio?
Yes.
Mrs. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Oh, congratulations, Mike. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
And then finally would be secretary. So we'll open up nominations for secretary. This would be a tough one to, tough one to guess on. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion to close? Nominations for secretary. No, we have it, but just a motion to close.
I'll make the motion to close.
Okay, second? Okay, all in favor. Well, so we'll close them, nominations for secretary, and we'll have the voice vote, roll call.
Okay, I'm, for whatever, you voted for Mrs. Benoit, right?
Well, we nominated her.
You nominated her.
Now we'll have the roll call.
Okay. Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Maston?
Yes.
Mr. Marc Antonio?
Yes.
Mrs. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Wonderful. We have our board. I don't know how many times we're going to meet with this current environment, but when we, when they're, when we're called upon, we'll do our job like we have for years in the past. So congratulations, and let's have a productive year. Item seven is approval of the 2025 regular meeting minutes, and that's fairly typical boilerplate stuff. I think you all have it. Yes. Were there any observations or anything to take note of, of concern? If not, we'll just accept them. Can have a motion to accept the meeting minute, meeting schedule for 2025.
I make a motion to accept the 2025 meeting schedule.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Item eight, under new business, is, let me get my paperwork together here. Is ZBR 2402, application. Application is for a special use permit by M&amp;M Transport Services LLC, 44 Railroad Street, North Smithfield. Lot is AP 004, lot 187. Applicant is seeking relief from section 340-3.9 accessory uses and section 340-3 interpretive or district use regulations tabled from the town charter and ordinance and relief, and from violations of the April 25, 1995 zoning board of review decision, and construction of a fuel tank without prior municipal approval. This lot is in the municipal M, manufacturing M zoning district. So council, if you could bear, quite a few things that I wanted to go over, because this has been anything but a clear-cut process, but I think what we're going to do is, yeah. First, what I'm going to do is enter into evidence what we have as formal submissions. Then, I have a list of questions that I generated, and I'm sure members have, and we can just discuss whether you want to give the presentation before I ask the questions, or we just engage as we go, as this is not unfamiliar for you. So let me enter in first, and then we'll proceed to the next step. T1 would be, oh, I'll go to the Ps first. T is the town. P1 is the application itself, which is, again, ZBR 2402, dated 12/10/24. We'll call P2, the North Smithfield zoning board hearing notice. It's a single sheet. We will refer and call P3, the CIA Technologies 200, a radius map, I believe, dated October 17th of 2024. That's a single-page document. P4 would be the 200-foot abutters list, and that's dated, has a date of 10/17 on the, again, CAI Technologies title. P5 would be one individual picture of the work performed at the rear of the property where the fuel tank is currently located. It shows the architectural buffering screen and part of the concrete pad. P6 would be similar picture from the opposite direction, which shows both, plus the tank itself and the bollards. We'll call P7, similar picture but taken from the abutting property view, looking at the parking spaces beyond the black fabric barrier. P8 be from the same point of view, but up on the hill, would appear to be from industrial drive, and that's the end of the pictures. If members did not receive, then we can just make note to the secretary and/or to the zoning official. P9 would be the warranty deed. That's a two-page document. P10 would be the site plan dated 10/3/24, provided by Coneco Engineers and Scientists of Bridgewater, Mass., again, for 44 Railroad Ave., Street, North Smithfield. P11 would be a large document memorandum with attachments, provided by, prepared and provided by Coneco Engineers and Scientists. It's dated June 12th of 2024. It's addressed to a Mr. Mark Waz Warsowski of M&amp;M Transport. It's regarding a special use permit slash impact to water supply review. It's P11, it's too many pages to count, but we all have it, so we all know what it is. So now, in addition to that, we have T1, which I believe all members were emailed. I don't know if you didn't receive it, then the building official did give you a copy. That was, that was written today, distributed today. It was addressed to me, as the chair at the time, of course, from Leo Coit, our building official, copies to the, both the solicitor and the assistant solicitor. And it's with regard to his summary of the complexities of this app. He highlighted the issues and summarized them accordingly, so that we can kind of agree as a baseline what actions or relief are sought of this board as part of this action, application, for clarity's sake. So that, we'll call that T1. Counsel, I assume you received it?
No, I've not.
You did not?
No, I've not. I did not receive that, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we have an extra copy to give to council, please? T2 is the minutes of the zoning, planning board meeting from April 28th of 1995. And it's, I think it's a total of three pages. No, the first one is just, T2 has the stamp on it. T3 is a two-page, these are the, the minutes and the motion. It's dated January 10th of 1995, and it references plat 4, lot 187. It was the original action to allow that the structure be built. And this has the minutes of the conversation of the planning board, where they come up with the conditions that were then listed in the decision. So that's T2 and T3. Counsel, if you did not receive, then we can, again, the office can provide you with that?
Okay.
T4.
So, so Mr. Chairman, I, excuse me, I missed T3.
Okay. T3 is, is the actual minutes.
Okay.
And that's dated January 10th of 1995. There are two pages here, and I believe this was the first time that the petition for that property was submitted. It just highlights the discussions and the vote. T4, T4 would be office of the planning board, Town of North Smithfield, to the zoning board of review dated February 13th of 1995. And this is to communicate that the planning board voted to grant final site plan review for plat 4, lot 187, and it listed the conditions of the decision of the planning board. Then T5 is just a single sheet. I may have misplaced it, but T5 is a single sheet, which is the actual decision. It's dated April 25th of 1995, and it's titled, Decision Pending Approval: Petition of Eugene Robert and Norman LaPierre. And again, that corresponds to everything else. In addition, the, we have a memorandum which, what are we referring to? Yeah, okay. What's our last T? T5, right? So we'll call this T6. T6, for council's benefit, and again, they will, the office will provide you, it was a letter to the zoning board of review, quote memorandum with some background and additional information, I quote, for this address, 44 Railroad, plat 004, lot 187, dated November 25th, and it's a two-page document. So we'll call that T6. T7 would be the zoning office distributed to the members of Rhode Island DEM, above-ground storage tank registration form. Or was that supplied as part of your application? I don't believe it was, was, counsel, was the above-ground storage tank registration part of your submission?
I believe it was.
Okay.
But we can add it as T7. Doesn't matter.
We can correct later for the record. T8, we'll call a Google Earth aerial view entitled, Paved Behind Building 2023 Spring. It's an aerial view, which I believe shows the current conditions. I'll stick with the pictures for now. T9 is a similar picture prior. It's the exact same picture with the overview, Google Earth type image, prior to any changes to the property, and it's dated 2022 summer. We'll call that T9. T10 is in between the two, I think. It's the exact same view, aerial view, Google Earth type. There's visible construction vehicles on site. It's dated 2022/2023 winter. T11 is the stop-work order. It's undated. It's not signed. It was prepared by Lawrence Enright, building and zoning official, for 44 Railroad Street, Four Sons LLC. Stop-work order number 23-27.3-123.0, and that is for, I don't have to read it, because it's part of the record, but that was the stop-work order. T12, which, yeah, I apologize, that was part of the application as well. Put a note. And that is a letter from M&amp;M Transport Services, Inc., 643 Manly Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. It's incorrectly addressed to the town of North, of the town of Smithfield, as opposed to the town of North Smithfield. It's untitled, excuse me, it's undated. It isn't even addressed to the building department. It's just to the town of Smithfield. I will read this one, because it's, it's, please be advised that we will continue to work on cement pads, poles, and paving, paving at our own risk until complete. Signed by Mr. Mark Wazowski, President. That's T12. And then the final I have would be T13, which is the Rhode Island DEM document, or section 2.10, for above-ground storage tank facilities. It's essentially the overview with the regulations and rules for said storage. It's one, two, three, four, five pages long, and I'm assuming it's from the Rhode Island DEM, and that was provided by the zoning office. So that's everything that I have. Did we miss anything, members?
No.
Okay. And I guess before, counsel, before you start, can you summarize, just so we're all on the same page, exactly what, before you get into your explanation, if you could just summarize, exactly what are you here for tonight? What relief are you specifically asking for?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. If I may, I'd like to add just one additional exhibit, P12, which is a memorandum essentially summarizing our application.
So this is something you're presenting today?
Tonight, yeah.
Okay, tonight? Of course, yeah.
But all it is is the summary of the application, or application summary.
So we're going to call this 14?
13. P13.
Uh, no.
P12, P12.
Nope, I was at 13 already.
P, P.
Oh, that's P. Okay, yeah, yeah.
P, yeah.
P's, P's, yeah, P12, okay. I wanted you, I guess you should start with that, then. Makes sense?
Yeah, makes sense. That's right. It segues nicely, I guess, Mr. Chairman. So to, essentially, for, for the record, good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, John Mancini on behalf of the applicant, M&amp;M Transport, as well as the owner of the property, Four Sons LLC. So the, the application before you is an application specifically for a special use permit to authorize an accessory use. The accessory use being the above-ground storage tank. And this is And this is pursuant to Section 340-3.3. And in addition to that, we're also seeking for the permitted, permitted, we're seeking for permission for the accessory use under District Use Regulations L1. And that's also part of your table of uses, Section 340. The, I guess the subcomponent of the request that is being made, or from what I can understand based upon my quick review of the memo that I received this evening from the building official, is also a modification of the zoning board approval granted in 1995 with regards to this property, which has some specific restrictions. My re, my review of that, of that ordinance, I'm sorry, of the, of the approval granted on April 25th, 1995, provided for the facility to be constructed, or provided a variance for that facility to be constructed, subject to five specific conditions. Specifically, condition number three was that none of the property to the rear of the building be paved, and that it be left as close to the natural state as possible. Paragraph, or condition number four, side lug, buttering, edge comb, remain gravel, no asphalt or impervious paving to be used in that, in this area. And five, pavement, pavement be limited to the area in front of the building, including four parking spaces.
Excuse me, counsel?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think you, you may have omitted the buffering?
I'm sorry?
The buffering?
Oh, section, paragraph two, that suitable screening plan be designed to screen the new facility along the southern and western property lines. Options for screening include, with edge combers' permission, establish screening on lot 203, and provide screening on the subject property in the front right corner. And if screening stops at the back corner of the building, that there is no continuous outside storage in the back. If the petitioner does not intend to have storage in the rear lot, screening would then be need to go to the back lot line. So the question is, our, our initial application did not request a verif, I'm sorry. Our initial application did not request a permission of this board to modify the 1995 decision. And I can, I can alt, I can amend that, I can amend that petition to request both a special use permit and what I would be, what I would deem a dimensional variance for modification of the 1995 zoning board decision. The, the only thing that, that makes me hesitant is I'm not sure if that was properly advertised or if that request is before the board.
Well, frankly, with the complexities that we were facing, after I review or present these for the record and for your consideration, I mean, I know it's my considered opinion, I'll defer to members, that, that this is far too complex, and it may not be proper or legal for us to decide on it tonight. I think without question for clarity and for the respect due to the previous zoning board that, that made that motion, I don't think we should rush into any decision unless we have time to truly hear your
Yeah.
perspective and also answer some of the questions that I and/or other members have. But should we then clarify now that we do or we don't have two actions that are going to be re-advertized? Counsel, the, the SUP I was understood is an accessory structure which by right,
Right.
we know that you're going to ask the board essentially to override or rescind the conditions of the 1995 decision. So that's action one. But we do not have an SUP for the accessory, or we do because it's a modification of a non-conformity or an, I think that's the question, whether we definitely have two actions or we have one?
Well, the, the other issue too, the, to add to the complexity for, for the special use permit is that the property is also in an overlay district, a water overlay district.
The 6.19.
The 6.19 requires a special use permit. So that is really what I believe to be the special use permit being requested is the, is under 6.19. And then I, I, the
But we have
the other, the other issue would be the, the modification.
But the, the memo prepared by the zoning official, I have a question about that as well, but the memo indicates that 20%, if you're under 20%, that the 6.19 is not applicable. So are we at two actions or one?
Well, if, not to interrupt, but if the 6.19, in my opinion, if 6.19 is not applicable because of the, the threshold, then, then I think you're at one action. I think you're at the modification or request for dimensional variance with regards to the 1995 zoning board decision.
Okay, which is what counsel, our counsel is, is indicating. So I just want to make sure that
Great minds think alike.
Everybody's on the same page here. So the accessory, the tank itself is by right. The only thing that you would ask of us is if we choose to override the previous decision with regard to the conditions and the improvements to the rear of the property. Okay.
Yeah.
So we're good with that. We're going to have one decision. And the 6.19 is currently not applicable based on the zoning official's memorandum?
Correct. It meets, it meets the criteria for the exemption.
So counsel, would you like me to start asking you, or do you want to finish your presentation from this memorandum?
No, I, I, I think, I, you know, I, I'd like to hear from you more.
Okay. All right, I'll start, and members, please feel free as I progress if you have things. So on the site plan, it's a little perplexed, perplexing because we have two site plans. We have the site plan that was attached to the DEM tank notification registration form, above-ground storage tank registration form, which we called T7. Required submission of multiple documents, among which was a, a site plan. And that site plan, of course, is very generic in nature, and it shows two catch basins. Now, on the Kenecko plan, the catch basins are technically drawn, but they're not identified as catch basins. So the question I would want, I believe the board would want Kenecko to address in writing is, are those catch basins in fact catch basins? Are they dry wells? Do they drain to a, a, in a qualified and approved discharge system? I think we need infiltr, we need to know that because clearly there's fuel being dispensed, you know, a few hundred yards away. And if you've got, if you get the rainstorm that's forecasted for this very night, where does the water that makes it to those catch basins go? So that's number one. I, I think for our purposes, we also need a zoning map overlay onto the site plan. Because it's quite obvious to the, to the bare eye that the building is non-conforming. And it appears quite clear that one of the rear concrete pads is encroaching over the property line. If in fact it is, then I think we would want to say, well, does the abutter know that you poured a concrete pad over the property line? And are they, did they grant you that privilege? And please, I think we need a plan that's a little bit easier to read than, you know, with, than the strained eye. And I think it's reasonable for the board to also request that the new site plan clearly show on a second page an overlay of what was done in violation. So that we don't have to guesstimate. He can, the engineer, we all know, can easily do a layover that shows what was done beyond what is in the restrictions from the 1995 decision. And then if, if your engineer could, in the planning board minutes, it references, quote, a dry well. We, I think we need to know if that dry well still exists, and if it does, where it is on the property. Because again, if we're talking about gasoline and diesel fuels, and you have a dry well, you know. The ZBR buffer, yeah, I mean, if you, counsel, if you accept the pictures, it would appear that your applicant, your, your owner, removed the buffer slash screening on the, would that would be the south side of the property, running parallel with industrial drive, correct? I think, did, did, would you acknowledge that your applicant removed it?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
All right, if you could, because the pictures would appear to show that they did. So what we would like to know is that if you did in fact, if your applicant did in fact remove the buffer slash screening, indicate that that was indeed a violation, why they did it, and include that in your relief if you're expecting this board to consider that relief. Drainage work. It's kind of perplexing. So I would want your, your engineer to address it. It would appear to me, and I think most members of the board, that we're not the planning board and we don't pretend to be, but it would appear that we have stormwater regulations that deal with applying pervy, impervious materials to the surface. And if you're going to put impervious, impervious materials, therefore, there should be drainage that handles the water, treats it, especially when you've got contaminants from a potential release. So my question is, I guess the counsel as well, do we have the authority to ask the planning board to acknowledge in writing whether planning board review is required of the improvements that were made without a permit? Given that they involve things that are in the world of the planning board?
I think you could seek a written opinion from the town planner with respect to that answer. But I, I wouldn't make your relief contingent upon that. I think the real question here is whether or not you're going to grant the relief based upon the applicant's request that you rescind the requirement that they not exceed the rare area of the property. That's really what he's doing. He's going back to 1995 and asking. I know you know that, and I know that's obvious to the members of the board. You could ask the chairman of the planning board, Mr. Carrillo, for an opinion to weigh in on that and get an updated opinion from your, your zoning official on that issue. But I, in, in terms of whether you have the authority to make the relief contingent upon that, I would weigh that as a factor, but I, I wouldn't make the overall decision contingent upon that factor.
Understood. But all due respect, counsel, what I, what I would ask is the chair and the, and the board can, can confirm if they'd like or, or, or go vote otherwise is, I think it's a reasonable request since the applicant violated the law twice by not doing the research to determine that there was a special use permit, and then going past the cease and desist to say, we're going to do it anyway. So I think it's reasonable to ask, to assist us in making a decision whether or not the planner would say that, no, if you told me you were going to do this, I would require drawings from a civil engineer. If he, and then we will react accordingly if he says, whatever he says, that's what we're asking for. If you object, I, I would assume you have the right to object, but I think it's a reasonable request.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you, you certainly can make that inquiry of the town planner and, and because it's a concern of the board, and then you weigh that with the other factors for the decision.
But I'm correct in asking that the applicant should do that, not the board?
You can put it on the applicant. It's going to get, I think you're going towards a continuance anyways, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So you can put, Mr. Mancini, it's not his first rodeo. He could go out and get that letter from the town planner and then bring it back.
Yeah.
That's reasonable, yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and then if you could also, counsel, when you speak, if, if, if Kenecko or whomever, why was the area, you've got two concrete pads, but it's not a continuous concrete surface. It's concrete and then it's asphalt in parts around the tank. I'm not quite, it's just general information because we're trying to understand and learn what and why. You know, why did they not put concrete everywhere? The Kenecko memorandum, I was curious if you know the answer. Was, I'm assuming, my years in this industry, and I'm sure our other, two other members who have many years on, on the design and build side of construction, it appears that Kenecko was hired post-construction?
Correct.
Okay. So they're, well, all due respect, they're trying to make it right, if you will?
They're doing it as-built.
Yeah. So item B, I just found on page two in the memorandum with regard to drainage, I just find it a little incredulous that he, quote, minor releases from the delivery trucks, filling hoses, et cetera, I paraphrase, would be contained on the concrete pad the tank is constructed atop of. In the highly improbable event of catastrophic failure of both the primary and the secondary walls of the tank, the release would be contained within the site boundary. It's perplexing, I think, to any reasonable person with any experience in this industry that all you have is concrete pads that are flat without any V groups for, for fuel dispersion, and you have no perimeter boundary. And you also have catch basins that are within distance to be flowed to. So I don't understand how that engineer can make that statement and expect board members to just smile and say, oh, you addressed it, so we're fine with that. Because what I would like him also to do is, can we get that engineer or an engineer to state in writing that the work done to date is in compliance with all Rhode Island DEM requirements? Because it, you know, it begs the question, we have to answer to the rest of the public. And when they see that the river is only 900 feet away, which he references in his same memorandum, we need to be able to know that, A, we have to respect the zoning board from 95. We also have to respect the residents to know that we're smart enough to say, forget a three-inch rainstorm, and you have flat surface, the water has to go somewhere. Where is it going to go? And how do you protect the environment and the abutters? I don't think that's unreasonable request.
No, no. And, and Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'll have the engineer available to testify as well. I think that's important.
But I would like, I personally would like as much in writing with his stamp as possible.
Absolutely.
Andre?
So I, I got, I got a lot on this. So every, everything that's being asked for this particular example for, it's in P11 and T7. If the requirements of the above-ground storage tanks were just met, that requires a drawing that shows all the distances and the drainage and everything else. And then that way, it's on one or two sheets of paper in a Victoria format where there's not a lot of reading, so you can easily see. And I think it answers almost every single question that's, that's being asked.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree. Picture tells a thousand words.
And that what we find about the engineer.
Yeah, we stand by nature. Yeah, be licensed in Rhode Island. Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
In fact, that information, if you read, I'm sure you read it, the DEM registration form, you would assume that should have already been supplied to the DEM because it's asked for in that document. Very same thing. Yeah. The other item I had was fire department. I, I know normally, you know, whenever we have, it's always subject to approval by every other applicable authority. But in this instance, we know the tank is empty. We know that for whatever reason, the applicant hasn't asked the fire department to approve the work, even though it would appear to any reasonable person that everything you intended to do, you did. The tank is there, the pump is there, the containment is there, the bollards are there. So it begs the question. Now, I know we, we cannot overreach, but again, I will put it as a reasonable request that if you're going to ask us to approve work that was done in violation, I think it's reasonable for the counsel to know whether or not the fire department finds it to be compliant with all, all of the local and federal and state laws, or it does not.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we're going to approve it, but it, at least it tells us that we have more knowledge. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's fine. And that's evidence for me to show that it's not detrimental to the surrounding area.
Yeah, it helps you in that regard, and it also informs us.
Yeah, I agree.
Because we don't want to, if we were to approve your request, then, you know, naturally, the applicant's going to build a fire department and say, well, don't give me a hard time. The plan, the zoning board approved it.
I wouldn't do that, but I know what you're saying.
Some may, some may. Lot coverage. Lot coverage, I'm a little bit confused, I, in due respect to the zoning official, with regard to 6.19, 8.1, that states that the exemption is less than 20% of the gross floor area, but in your application, if it needs to be amended, then that's part of the amendment, you note 24%. So if it's 24, are we back to it being applicable, or did you err in your calculation? I don't know which one is the case. And then for the application, I really think you need to clean it up, if you will, but all due respect, item 10 says, no alterations made, but that's clearly, would not appear to be an accurate statement of fact, and I think you would agree, because clearly, this is, describe the proposed construction or alterations, and the answer is, no alteration shall be made. It's not about what shall, it's about what was, right? So I don't think, I don't think that application is properly working.
Well, it's a question, it's a question as to how you read the application. I mean, I take it on a different, I read it differently, but I understand your point. And so what we can do is identify for you the alterations that were made.
Yep.
To the property. And that's going to be handled in the plan anyways, because you're going to have an overlay.
Yep.
So we'll do that.
And then even item 11, item 11, are there any outstanding violations? And ironically, zoning ordinance is not checked off, and clearly you're in violation. Is that agreed upon or?
No, because there is no violation of the zoning ordinances. We're, the issue is, is a violation of a zoning board decision that wasn't recorded in the land evidence records.
No, I accept that. I think, I may have, I may have missed, that's technically correct, so we'll leave that be.
Again, I mean, we'll make that clear in the record.
Yeah.
We can stipulate that we know that we're here to modify or rescind or override, however you want to categorize it, the 1995 zoning board decision. The condition's there too.
Okay. And then on item 12, the only thing I, what seems a little bit, you reference site plan approval, and we all know that we have no jurisdiction over the planning board. And I think, when I look at these things, I look at three months after the meeting, whenever his money, his memory has diminished and you're trying to recreate, or on appeal. And a superior court judge is looking and saying, site plan review, what is the zoning board's business with that? We don't have any business. And in fact, it is a zoning board decision, so I think we should strike anything that references site plan review, because it might confuse someone in a year, in two years, in six months about exactly what it was that we were asked to do. You agree?
Yeah, I agree. That's fine.
And I guess, what's your opinion of 13? It says, explain the changes. So I guess you're correct in stating that there are no changes because it's there.
But there could, yeah, right.
At this point, as part of the application, there are no changes.
Yeah, I can, I can clean that so that it's not, I don't mean to be deceptive.
That's the intent. I just want to make sure there's no ambiguity.
Yeah, I understand.
And then appendix B, what I noted was, again, same thing, you referenced final site plan approval. I think in everyone's best interest, we should just indicate that it's a ZBR decision that you want relief from. That's what I've got, members. Anything else? I mean, it's a complicated.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you, and I appreciate your efforts in the clarification. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I would request that we continue the meeting, allow an opportunity to re-advertize so that it's clear that the purpose for which we reconvene is for variance or modification of the April 1995 decision, and we will submit as part of our application, the essential 21 items that you've referenced.
Okay. I can email these two if you'd like.
Yeah, if you could.
Is that appropriate that I can email them this?
Yeah, because come tomorrow morning, I'm not going to be able to read my writing.
I know. And do we have a date certain that you want to go, obviously we're going to go after the holidays?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Oh, we have these scheduled, I guess. Do you have anything? Do you want to check with your?
No, tell me what works for the board.
Do we have anything? We don't have the usual issues anymore, so. I get a search. Do you have it in front of you? What would you, oh, thank you. January 14th would be the first available.
I would probably need some more time, given the.
28th would be two weeks later.
Yeah, let's do 1/28.
Okay.
2/28, because I want to have the engineer available as well.
And I, just before we move to continue, you know, just a general question to counsel, I guess both of you, because, I mean, we might as well, I have no reason not to ask you. At any point, does anybody ever try to reach out? When you had these issues in the past, you have previous zoning boards that made certain decisions, does any, is it legal, is it proper to actually reach out to any of them, to ask them why they did what they did, or you have to purely rely on the minutes that were recorded?
So is your question, is it proper for you to go back and ask members if they're still with us who are on that board in 95, what their intent was?
Exactly.
No, I don't think that's proper. I think you have to rely on the actual decision itself that was before the board and the narrow relief that the applicant's asking you for, which is to, depending on how you want to define it, either modify grant dimensional relief or rescind the original requirement that they not exceed the build on the property as defined in that, in that writing.
Okay, that's what I thought about.
It's a good question. Your mind is inquiring as to trying to get a handle on the whole scope, but I wouldn't think that would be proper.
Yeah, I have to agree with that. It's similar to sometimes reading a case and you want to go back and ask that judge what he was thinking at that time and when he did it 30 years ago. Never done it, so.
So we're in agreement, we can entertain a motion to continue this application to a date certain of 1/28/25. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue this to date certain of January 28th, 2025.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a second? I don't think we need a roll call, do you? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy holidays, everyone.
Oh, same to you. Enjoy. So item, item 8B is ZBR 24-03, application for a special use permit by Nick Balzano at 61 Reservoir Road, North Smithfield. This is lot AP 021, lot 004. Applicant is seeking a special use permit for a ground-mounted solar voltaic system as an accessory used to residential, for residential use under section 7.5.7.4. Lot is an RA zoning district. Okay. Gentlemen, are you, are you, go ahead, just identify yourself when you get up there, please.
Good evening, name's Nick Balzano.
Okay, so you're Nick.
Yep.
Okay. Nick, let me do this first, as you noticed, we have to enter into evidence of the information, and then we can have you make your presentation.
Sounds good.
So P-1 will be the actual application, town of North Smithfield, for variance or special use permit, we'll call it P-1, and again, it's dated ZBR 2403, December 10th of 2024. P-2 has no date. It's a request titled, to whom it may concern, but I believe it was intended for the zoning board with regard to confidentiality associated with the ownership of the property. And it was provided by Freedom Forever, Taunton, Massachusetts, signed by Melissa Fleming. P-3 is the zoning board hearing notice, which just lists the date, the time, and the application. P-4 is the 200-foot, 200 feet of butters list prepared, it was, it has, North Smithfield's, it's a CA1 Technologies, it's dated 11/26/24. There's a handwritten note on the bottom, butters mailed notices on 11/26/24. P-5 would appear to be the map showing the property. It's not dated, it's not titled. The property seems to be the one in the middle with the road showing. P-6 is, I believe, two or three, three, four, four pictures of the property. Gives you the location, longitude and latitude and elevation of the three different pictures, and it says powered by Angel Cam, no date and no title. P-7 would be, it's, it's a, it's a plan of sorts, it's a submittal of sorts, but it's prepared as a drawing. It's titled ground mount photovoltaic system. It's prepared by Freedom Forever, dated 10/16/24. And it's, the stamp with the signature is registered PE Electrical, and a registration number is 14631, Zhong Chao, I believe, I may have mispronounced it. P-8 is the, again, essentially a submittal of information, documentation for the array solar panels. It's called the Q Peak Dual Black MLG 10 Plus Series. That was eight. So P-9 is the trustee deed, it's received for record, North Smithfield, April 16th of 2024 at 8:35 a.m. Okay. And then we did receive, I received via email, I didn't get it in time to distribute to members, but I can tomorrow. It's an email from Gail Donomi, Reservoir AV, subject December 10th. It was titled to Mr. Carrulo, the town planner, North Smithfield, and myself, with regard to the physical address and the lack of notification, so we can go into this after you make your presentation. So why don't you proceed with, it was Matt, right? No, Nick.
Nick.
Nick, go ahead, Nick, please. And you are, what is your, are you a professional? Are you a, are you in sales? What is it that you?
Property manager.
European, okay. For?
Client.
Okay.
So, good evening, hopefully a little bit more straightforward, but this is, the presentation is quite simply to.
Just in case.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kyle, you good?
Yeah. All right, cool. Thank you. Yeah, maybe? Check, check. One, two. I'm just too tall for this thing. Two solar arrays with a total of 84 panels, and they're two separate solar arrays, standalone, ground-mounted, to the left of the main residence, to the right, if you're looking at the front of it, out in an open field with sufficient room, so.
Yep. And so you're the, you work for the property owner?
Correct.
And you take care of his affairs if you were?
Yep.
Okay.
That's correct.
Anything else immediately?
No, that's open to any questions you have, yeah.
Well, I made some notes, and I think, all due respect, what I think we should have moving on is a letter from the owner acknowledging that you are in fact, you know, since you signed the, your name is on the app, but it doesn't specifically say. I'm not questioning it, I'm just saying for the record, if you can just have him create a memo?
I think we did enter in, Vivian, there was a notarized letter.
I may have missed that.
There's many.
Does it have both?
Yeah.
Does he sign off? Okay, I missed that. All right, so we're good. So he acknowledges that you're his rep.
Hundred percent.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that.
I think it was two or three pages that were signed off and notarized on.
Just make sure that nobody asked that question after the fact.
Because I did drop them off to Vivian, yeah.
Now, I think in respect to the email that I received today, this was with, in regard to 6.19, which is the watershed ordinance that is, exists in the town, which you may or may not be aware of. Your solar company should have done the research. So this, Gail Donomi, who is, was a member of the committee that revised the ordinance, indicates that because this is in the Crook Fall Brook watershed, that notification is required, not just of Win Socket, but of Lincoln and Smithfield. And she noted that on the list, neither town was included. So I think, given the sensitivities, because if we look at, you know, if we look at the only other map we have that gives us any reference, if we look at what we're calling P-5, you know, it would appear that the reservoir is relatively close to the property. So I, you know, I'm almost inclined, now, mind you, we've approved this type of installation before. So it's not uncommon or irregular that a resident would come. You've got plenty of property, there's no doubt.
Yep.
However, I think in all due respect to the watershed, which is of vital importance to all of us, I would ask that, it would require that we have to continue this, but I think what we need to do is confirm that Lincoln and Smithfield were notified. If you take exception to that, you can check with the town planner, Mr. Carrulo, and if he verifies Ms. Donomi's Berlinghoff's assertion, then I would, we would request that it be done. If she's in error, then of course, the planner can advise the zoning official and say that she was in error. But if she's not in error, then I think we need to prove, you need to prove to us that you did send a letter of notification to both Lincoln and Smithfield. And I think what should be done also is, this map, you know, this, it's really not a, it's not a zoning map, it's not a plot plan. I know I would want to see, again, only because of the sensitivities of the water, I would want to know exactly how far the proposed array is from the water, and an engineer can determine that.
Okay.
Because I think, and if there are buffers, natural buffers that already preexist, you know, we, I think that's a reasonable request, because that's, that is a significant body of water that three towns rely upon. body of water that three towns rely upon. And the last thing I think we want to do is approve anything that could any, in any way possibly jeopardize the sanctity of that water. So it may take you a little bit, but this engineering firm probably can, I know the solar people deal with this all the time, site plans, and so getting a surveyor who can locate the water relative to the proposed location and give us a dimension, and then a description of what the natural buffer is, whether it's a line of trees, and exactly how far away it is, and/or if it makes more sense to put the array further away, or on the other side of the property. It appears to be in the location where you'd most want it. So if you can show us that that location is not a hazard, then that helps us.
Is there, is there a minimum distance that you're looking for?
I do not know the answer. That's the, if there is such, then it would be in the ordinance, and the burden is on.
Right.
The burden is on, I believe you're okay.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think for information purposes.
It's usually 200 feet, I believe.
Yeah. So I, I would assume that you're okay, but we should clarify it.
Yeah, well over.
Because we only get one shot at this. Once it's done, it's done.
Understood.
I think while you have the time, it's, it would be required by the zoning official, even if we grant it. But I don't think there's an issue with fire department access, given that the, that the driveway is right there. Does anyone think that that, we need to act on that? I mean, if you look, it's really, it seems to be very close to the driveway.
It's a.
And they would have to come anyway and look at it.
Yeah. I don't want to throw out figures, but it's probably less than 100 feet from the driveway, yeah.
And they're, they're going to have to look at it, I would think, at some point. And the fencing and anything else, if you're not familiar, what you should do is go online and download the 6.19, because this company, if they're going to do the work, Freedom, you know, believe it or not, it's happened before where the solar company came in here, and they actually were arrogantly telling us that there was no such thing. And I, I looked at them, and I said, "How can you, how can you make such a statement? It's right here." It's, you know, so it's his burden, their burden.
Understood.
To look it up and make sure that you're compliant. And, you know, the zoning official is always there to ask or answer questions. And electrical, I'm assuming, nothing will be, it's all gonna, you've got all the Tesla batteries.
Three batteries.
Yeah, so it's staying on site.
Correct.
You're not bringing any other. And the screening and buffering, it's all relevant, too. You don't really have, do you have any of butters that are within sight of the proposed location? I didn't think so.
No.
The closest of butter is across the street, or?
Have to look at an aerial view, but it's.
But it's not, you can't see anything.
Can't see anywhere.
Okay. So again, and that would be, and you're gonna, you, you would work with the zoning and building official, but it doesn't appear to be an issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Could this be voted on contingent on that site plan of maintaining the?
I, I would not, only because of the, the water issue. I, I want to make sure that it, it's a moot point if we approve it and then we send a letter. Because if they take issue, we have to respect and undertake their issues. If they say, "We strongly feel this way," doesn't mean we have to accept and act on what they say, but we owe them the opportunity to comment. So I would not be in, I wouldn't, the board members can comment, but I wouldn't be in favor of voting on anything until we knew that both of those water departments or towns had been notified. Everybody good on that one? And then do we confirm, right, that this app would be vested, even if Mark, if, if the planning board finishes with their revisions to the 5.7, this is vested into the existing, right?
Yes.
So he's, because he's almost done, I think, with their revisions?
Yeah, I think this one goes to vote in April.
Okay. So either way, it's still vested into what's here now. Okay. Well, I mean, I, I think, you know, we don't like to continue, but, but I think after I got that email, and knowing how close it is, and knowing that we can't show anyone an actual drawing that says that the array is X feet from the water, it makes me uncomfortable because it's water, and it's what we need. And actually, in all due respect, your people on your end, they should have kind of concluded that, you know what, maybe we should show them how far away we are from the water so that they don't ask the question?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think it's an unreasonable request. Members agree? Okay. So really, I think to summarize, all we really want are two action items, if you can, you know, make note of them. One is, get your, get us a stamped site plan. It shows the array, shows the property boundaries, and shows the exact location to the water of the proposed array. And then confirm with the zoning official and the office that you show them documentation that either they or you send notification to, when they say, we should clarify, when they say notify the towns, I'm assuming they want to notify the water departments, or, you know, because that would be the only relevant entity. But why don't you get in touch with the zoning official tomorrow, and we can double-check, right?
Yeah, I know One Socket Water has Crook Fall Brook, or whatever.
Yep.
There's easements going through there for the One Socket Water supply. I know that for a fact.
Yeah. So what we want to make sure is, is that, I guess we can do three things. One is confirm with Mark, the planner, that Gail Denomee's note is accurate. And then make sure that they show you notification goes out to the other two towns. And then the, the third thing is to get your engineer, that's the one you should do right away, to look at the drawing and get us a drawing that shows us the exact distance to the water from the proposed location. Okay?
Okay.
And we can continue that, you to that same date, or I don't know if you think you need a little bit more time to talk to your, is the engineer local, or is it somebody?
Yeah, 28 should work.
28 should work? Okay, so you're good with that?
Yep.
Okay. So 1, 2, 1/28/25. And we've confirmed, we know what, we, you know what we need?
Yeah, so, actually, just wanted to clarify. So it's notifying the water departments and those other two municipalities?
I believe that would be the proper thing, because it would fall under there. If anyone's going to be concerned, it would be the water departments of those two towns?
So Lincoln Water and One Socket.
Uh, Smithfield.
And Smithfield.
I think you already notified, One Socket was on the list.
Yes.
So One Socket has received it. Does that go to the town, or does it go to the water department, or?
It was a PO address, I believe.
Okay.
So it was just city of One Socket. So we can check on that tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, this town has spent a lot of time on 6.19 and getting the watershed act, so that, so they're very aware of it. So I think the water department should be. So let's send it direct to them, and then no one can say that we didn't do due diligence.
Okay. Understood.
All right, good. Oh, thank you for your cooperation.
Yes.
So we'll need a motion. Which one is it? No, because that's part of the submission to him. Why don't we get a motion to continue to a date certain of 1/28/25 with, with the requests, you know, noted.
I'll make a motion to continue to a date certain of January 25th, 2025. January 28th, 2025.
We have a second, Mr. Mark Antonio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Merry Christmas.